All right, our panel tonight includes Brian Carey, Chief of the Medford Police Department, Kristy Tolusti, Taylor County District Attorney, Bruce Daniels, Taylor County Sheriff, Jen Meyer, Child and Services Protection caseworker for Taylor County Human Services, Scott Perrin, Director of Emergency Services, Medford Aspirous Hospital, and Taylor County Medical Examiner, Courtney Scholl, Sexual Program Consultant, Stepping Stones Domestic Abuse Shelter, Shelley Crankwaller, Behavior Specialist, Medford Elementary School, and Liza Deliden, Deputy Director of Human Services Supervisor, Children and Family Services. We'll turn it over to Brian to start the PowerPoint presentation.
Just like it says, meth in Taylor County, all of Taylor County. I can, you know, sit here tonight in front of you as the Chief of Police of Medford and say, you know, it's just not Medford, it's not the city of Medford, it's all of Taylor County. As we see here, it shows some of the news articles. Some of these are not exactly from our area when it talks about stolen merchandise recovered in the value, but I can tell you that stolen merchandise, well, we have a lot of thefts. Thefts are up. We're seeing a lot of residual effects of this methamphetamine use, and that is violence, that is crimes, that is abuse, that is assaults. So whereas some of these stories specifically here in front of you on this slide is not exactly from our local, the stories are there, you do see them, they're in the paper, and I can tell you that, again, as the residual effects of the use of methamphetamine, it is the assaults, it is the stolen property, the firearms, I think we've all heard of that. Our detective is currently working one right now for the city involving, and that has spilled over into Price County, and that involves theft of firearms as well.
So I became involved because of the concerns at our agency with what we're seeing, especially in the children and family area with meth use by parents and the impact that's having on our children and families. Since 2010, we have begun seeing an increasing number of reported cases of maltreatment because of parental making of or use of meth. Currently, we have 12 children that are in relative placements because of parental meth use. We have two children in foster care and one juvenile in group care. So the stats that are up there were from June, and there's still, we still have a number of children that are on juvenile orders because of parental meth use. We're concerned, we're having to ask family members to take in children and provide for their daily needs. They're taking on the emotional and financial responsibility of raising these children and putting their own lives and plans on hold so they can care for these children. These family members, unfortunately, are also often being victimized by the meth user, having money or other items stolen. The user may be financially depleting the family by asking for money, for food, housing, transportation, and other needs, and what we're finding is that a lot of our families are burning out and may even be disowning these users because it's, they can't continue to support them, and so these parents are losing their most important support in their lives. Children and Family Services, we become involved with children and families for many safety concerns related to the use of meth. Some of these concerns that we're seeing is that parents are unable to hold jobs, maintain housing, food, or transportation. They're unable to meet their own needs, much less their children's needs. They commit crimes, are incarcerated, and become unavailable, or they have medical or mental health crises due to their meth use and cannot safely parent. They have a high rate of domestic violence, are aggressive, erratic, impulsive, and physically unhealthy. These parents rarely admit to meth use or minimize their use and the devastating impact of their use on both themselves and their children. They have repeated positive drug screens, but they deny meth use. They may become sober while in treatment or incarcerated, but unfortunately, once they're released, they can't seem to stay away from meth. Treatment outcomes for meth addiction has been very poor. These children are extremely traumatized by the parental meth use. They're physically exposed to this drug, it's in their environment, they're exposed to the dangerous lifestyles of their parents, they miss school, or they come to school tired and unprepared, unable to focus and learn. They are exposed to criminal activity, their caretakers are often also drug users. They are unfed, unsupervised, medically neglected, physically or sexually abused. They are having to speak to social workers in law enforcement. They are being told by their parents to lie, or they lie because they're trying to protect their parents from being arrested. They see their parents being arrested. They are placed with relatives or foster care, and they're losing the support of their moms and dads. They are having their contact with their parents supervised and controlled because we're concerned about the parental meth use, and/or they're going to the jails and visiting there or at prisons. Parents are missing their visitations, they're missing holidays, and these children are forever negatively impacted and traumatized by their parents' use of meth. We've had a lot of concerns with other drug use in our county, but meth use is the toughest addiction that the parents face, and it's the hardest for us to work with. Our social workers work really hard to assist families to assure needs are met and children are safe, but have been mostly unsuccessful with these parents. There does not seem to be anything we can find to help parents beat these addictions. Parents want to become sober and raise their children, they love their children, but the addiction rules. It's heartbreaking to children, parents, extended family, and our workers to watch these families fall apart and to be unable to safely reunify children. Meth destroys families. We just finished an involuntary termination of parental rights due to parental meth use. This was heartbreaking to everyone, including the social worker. This is never the outcome we would choose, but these children deserve safe, permanent, and consistent caretakers, and their parents are no longer able to be those people. We are seeing meth use with our juveniles and our juvenile justice system as well. We currently have a juvenile in out-of-home care and on a delinquency order due to meth use. When using meth, juveniles also have erratic, uncontrollable behaviors, become involved in crimes, and have poor school attendance and performance. They lose friendships, involvement in positive activities such as sports, employment, and their future success is extremely rare. Currently, the counties surrounding us are in serious crisis due to parental meth use with large numbers, and I'm talking hundreds, of children in out-of-home care. They are putting out emergency requests to surrounding counties for placement options, which I've never seen, and I have worked in my field for 20 years. Their social workers are overwhelmed with high numbers of cases and unable to find resources for these children and families. Social workers in these counties are barely able to manage child safety, much less able to provide case management services and duties to these families and other families in need that they are working with. Agencies are now going to their county boards, asking for financial help, both for additional staff and for out-of-home care service monies. Just to give you an idea of the cost of out-of-home care, two of these children placed in out-of-home care for two years cost this county $38,000. Group care for one juvenile is $6,000 a month, which equals $72,000 a year, and these costs are coming out of our pockets. Due to meth use, counties are absorbing the increasing costs of community crime, substance, and mental health treatment, medical expenses, and out-of-home care costs. I'm here tonight because this is beginning to happen here in Taylor County due to this meth epidemic. To stop this epidemic, we need to stress our motto of never using meth, not even once, because one time is all it takes to become addicted. The first high the meth user gets is never repeated, but they will spend a lifetime attempting to achieve that high while they destroy their lives and their children's lives in the process.
As the District Attorney here in Taylor County, I'm the individual who receives the case files from law enforcement after they've completed their investigations. So I am the one that is responsible then for filing the criminal charges against those individuals. As of June 20th this year, we had already filed 75 felony cases here in Taylor County, which maybe doesn't seem like that many, but it is unusual for our county to have that many felony charges filed already halfway through the year. Of those 75 felonies, 46 of those cases, there was meth-related in those cases in some way. So the charges may have ranged from possession of meth itself to manufacturing meth, delivering meth, but there are a whole lot of other charges and cases that don't appear to have drug charges in the case itself, but were motivated by somebody's addiction to meth. So for instance, we had many burglaries in the first half of the year. As Brian indicated, we've had numerous firearm thefts. We've also had stolen vehicles, not to mention the child neglect charges that we have. Sometimes we've got some of those. Also, the impaired driving that we see. So if an individual is operating under the influence of meth, that certainly puts everyone on the roadway at harm's way. One of the trends that I think that we are seeing, or at least that I'm seeing in my office, is that we used to see more of the manufacturing or the making here in labs. We're seeing less of that. That doesn't mean that it's disappeared, and probably law enforcement will talk to you maybe about why we're seeing less of those labs, but that doesn't mean that we're seeing less meth. We're actually seeing more meth, it's just that people are probably getting it from a source and not having to make it. It seems to be that people, by not making it, not manufacturing it, are being turned from addicts into also dealers. So now, not only do they have an addiction, but they're also having to sell it down the chain, and they themselves then are becoming a dealer and making the situation that much more complex, reaching out and touching that many more families and individuals. So it certainly has a very spiraling effect on the entire community.
So what is meth? Well, meth is short for methamphetamine. It's a synthetic stimulant that affects the nervous system. And I'll sit here and I'll tell you, it's, when they say it's synthetic, it's not like synthetic oil. The stuff that you will hear as we go through this slide is to what they use to make this drug. You question why anybody would take those ingredients, put them together, and ingest this into their system. As it has been said by Liza, it takes one, just one, and once you do it, you are addicted. And the rate at which they're able to try and turn that around, there's not a great degree of success. There is success. So meth is short for, full term, methamphetamine. If we look at it, it has some of the street names: ice, crystal, crank. So it goes by a lot of different names. These are key. Look at them. Try to remember, if you hear somebody using some of these words. As I said before, the composition, the chemicals they put together, you see it's pseudoephedrine now. We in law enforcement have looked at how we can, and the federal government has stepped in. There's a lot of things that used to be able to go over the counter. Now you step in and you have to sign for certain drugs. Now you can't just get them over the counter. Now they're making it more difficult to do this. But I will tell you that in my 20-some years of law enforcement, that just because they take away one thing, they find a different way to make it from another thing, okay? So, you know, we can step on that, but they're going to come up with a different method. They call these people that make the meth, they call them cooks, for good reason. They're coming up with recipes, ways to make it, ways to use one drug, one chemical, mix it with another one. And none of these chemicals, and some of them, you mix them, they're deadly. Not just in your system, but they blow up. And you'll hear more about that as well as we go through this. You'll see this is a white or yellow crystal powder. In this slide, it shows some of the ways that it's ingested: snorted, smoked, injected, swallowed. I can tell you that we don't just see the injected, we don't see just the smoke, we see it all. We've had people here that have tried it many different ways, and they're being creative. I'll tell you another thing that's scary for us in this area is that they talk about, "We're going to see more needles," so be looking for needles. As our officers are out in the street, as our first responders are out dealing with people on a medical call, that is scary, but it's scary for all of us. So they talk about the needle sharing, they're talking about the exposure to the different diseases that are coming with this. Well, it's the hazard to our children, needles being thrown in parks. We here in the city have had two different calls, two different incidents, rather, where needles have been dumped in a garbage can in the city park. So, and people have been stuck with those needles. So, you know, it's scary, it's there. It's not just them having a pipe, using that pipe, and taking that pipe with them. Now they're using the needle, and if they're not sharing that needle, they're throwing that needle down. So think of your children, think of your grandchildren, think of yourself that are out there and they see these type of things. As we'd said before, just one time, and one thing I want to have you take away from this, if you look at the addiction factor on this, it doesn't say mild, it doesn't say moderate, it uses the word extreme for a reason, okay? It just takes one time.
What are our officers out on the street? What are they looking for? What are we looking for in our families? What should you be looking for? You know, some physical and mental effects. First of all, there's going to be a host of all kinds of different, I guess like the slide says, undesirable effects. You might see, actually, the most commonly discussed side effect is a paranoia. I remember sitting here in this room not too awful long ago when there was a DCI agent here, and they had a video of a young man that was in and out of an extreme paranoia. One moment, he might be way over in the corner of the car in handcuffs, almost mewling, trying to stay away from the officer, and the next moment, he might, you know, actually charge out, talking in gibberish. And those are the types of things that you might see. That's an extreme. But you also might see withdrawal from normal patterns. You know, obviously, certain types of addictions are going to be very, very obvious. You might see, you know, issues with the skin. There's actually documented cases of people that, they call it bugs, that get these chemicals that are connected to the skin, that might actually take pliers and try to rip the bugs out that they believe are in their skin. So those are telltale signs that there might be something going on that you need to be aware of. I don't want to say that every change that you might see in a loved one, or just somebody that you're familiar with, you know, is specifically related to meth or any other illegal substance, but it's certainly something that bears notice and possibly, you know, checking with somebody that knows better than I do, or that you do, somebody that's got expertise in those areas. I think another very significant impact is the environmental effects that we see with these drugs. With the lab, certainly, I remember, recall working with Chief Coyer a few years ago on a lab that was taken down in a mobile home. That home needs to be decontaminated. It's a very, very expensive and costly, you know, obviously a costly process. I think in that particular case, the home needed to be destroyed. That's not done by anybody here in Taylor County, you know, teams and services have to come in from outside, and often those are not costs that are going to be reimbursable or, you know, collected by restitution or something like that. Over five pounds of toxic waste is created from every pound of this stuff. And these are quantities that are probably pretty common when you get into that area that we were talking about, or that Kristy was talking about, with a dealer. You might see something, somebody that has that type of quantity. More often than not, what we're seeing, different places where they've got the little, what they call gem bags, that's what we see most frequently. And they've got a very good example in there of what crystal meth looks like. Again, these are obviously legitimate quantities that are out there for transport. That's not normally what we're taking off unless you see a little bit larger quantity in someone's possession, like they were going to be dealing. What type of paraphernalia is out there? Really, it's your imagination, and the imagination of the people that are desperate to ingest this type of product. A soda can that's been, you know, made into a pipe. Any officer that's here tonight will tell you that we've seen it many, many times over the course of years, not just for methamphetamine, but marijuana and other drugs of choice that are ingested through smoking. Needles, the glass pipes are a telltale sign, of course, of methamphetamine. Snorting tubes, you'll see many pens in there. You know, just because your son or daughter has got a pen in their bedroom does not necessarily mean that they're using it for, you know, improper purposes. They might even be doing homework, although my boys didn't do a whole bunch of that. But, you know, it might be a very legitimate purpose, but it also bears inspection. Is there some type of residue either in the pen or, you know, on a counter or something like that that would lead you to believe that it's being used for something else? We'll talk a little bit more about our kids here in a little bit, but basically, you know, butane lighters, syringes, pipes, rubber tie-offs, snorting tubes, all those are items that should draw your attention, whether in your home or on the street.
This slide here is local prices. So what are we seeing? When we speak of prices, we speak of across the board. It could be across the state, this region, this area. These prices are changing, and the reason why is that if there is a major lab that was taken down in the Twin Cities, that supply is interrupted, it comes from a different location, somebody goes, "You can't get it from them, but I can get it to you," the price just goes up. That did happen. It happened here locally. It was coming from the Twin Cities. The FBI moved in, stepped on a lab over there, took out a major supplier. They couldn't move the product anymore, the price went up. Subsequently, out of that, we also ran into some of the more local labs that were going on, and we'll discuss that a little later as well. So when looking at the local prices, you're going to find that quantities of a quarter gram to one gram are what they call personal use. As we go down the line here, if we look at 14 grams, half is up, 5 to 800, that's somebody that's moving the product. They're getting the drugs, they're going ahead and selling it, they're dealing it, okay? Generally speaking, a quarter gram to one gram. So, and you could see a quarter down as low as $25. They're maintaining a job, they have $25 to blow, they could easily spend $25 on something else in the community. Instead, they're going and they're buying those drugs. I want to point out this, these smaller amounts that are here, using the half, the one, the quarter, the personal use amounts, and I want to bring the room that they put together for, again, if you haven't seen it, you have to go see it. It's a must-see for every parent, it's a must-see for every person that's here tonight. But what I want to point out is that when you're in there, you'll notice that when we're talking about these quarter and one grams, they'll very easily fit in the canisters in the hiding spots that are in there, very easily, okay? So that's why we look at the personal. They have those amounts, they can very easily hide those amounts that we're talking about here in those hiding spots in the room. The price depends upon what's going on at the time in the area.
When we talk about crystal meth and the super labs, you know, you hear about Mexico, California, southwestern United States, that's all reality. They're making mass quantities, and it's being shipped. We've got a very mobile population, so, you know, a lot of that, those products are moved that way. We also, on a local level, and I'm here to tell you that we have seen every one of these labs right here in Taylor County, I want to draw special attention to two of them, and that's the one pot, the shake-and-bake method, a very volatile, very dangerous method of creating these products. As a young deputy sheriff, I thought it was pretty bad when I would see a, you know, a plastic bottle and somebody would put the Works bathroom cleaner and then tinfoil in it, screw the cap on it, and throw it in somebody's mailbox. Eventually, the chemical reaction would happen, and there would be an explosion, the mailbox would be damaged. Nowadays, we put some of those same chemicals in those bottles, we add some other things like battery acid and you name it, bad stuff, it's all legal to have in your home. We put those same products in a bottle, and then when it's done cooking, we ingest that into our body. What's scary about that for me is that, how many times do we see adopt a highway, or we have very civic-minded people that are going out and cleaning up our highways? What's the best method of being a one-pot cook now? You put all those ingredients in it, in a bottle, you like to use a Gatorade bottle, by the way, because it's a bigger mouth and it's easier to get the ingredients into, and you throw that out in the ditch, because if you do that, you don't get caught with it in your trunk. So every once in a while, these people have to go back and just burp the gas off of that bottle, but again, it's still easier, you know, to do that than to be caught with it in your possession. What happens is they actually take the cap and they burp the gases off of this bottle so that it doesn't explode, and that's what brings us back to these bugs that I talked about a little bit earlier. Those gases escape, they touch the skin, and it's putting that person under the influence of that product in there. So we've got people that are using this method to create this drug, and then we've also got people out on the highway that are cleaning up the ditches and very, very unwittingly picking up that bottle, and what are they doing when they pick it up? They're shaking the ingredients and potentially causing an explosion that can harm them, and unintentionally could potentially create a situation where they become an addict. So it's very important when you're out, if you're out there picking up, you know, litter on the highway, and you see something that looks out of the ordinary, or if you're walking down the street, anytime you see something that's out of the ordinary, we encourage you, call law enforcement, let us respond, we'll get, you know, we'll get the proper resources there to deal with that. The anhydrous ammonia, or Nazi method, back when Brian and Chief Coyer retired, and I were young officers back in the 90s, it was methcathenone. And I think Nazi method is a very potent way of saying this, but we learned back when we were young officers dealing with that, that this was a product that, you know, dated back well before Nazi Germany, actually, but it had been on the shelf then. They determined it was too dangerous to create and too vicious to use on the people that they were experimenting on, so it ended up back on the shelf. Back in the, I think it was probably the late 80s, early 90s, this product came back off the shelf when two chemistry students in the UP of Michigan found the recipe, and that was how the corridor came out of, out of the UP into the state of Wisconsin and ultimately down into Taylor County. Think about that, a product that was too vicious for a horrible time in our history, and we have brought it back, we need to fight that.
We see a lot of people that are having decreased coping skills and people who want immediate results for their stressors and problems. There's a whole list of age ranges, young parents, single parents, grandparents, people that aren't parents. It's basically, it can attack anybody across the board. I think what we see most prevalently in the hospital setting is the mid to late teens through probably that 30-some-year-old range, anybody can be affected by this drug. Use it once, or get affected by it once, and you could be hooked for life.
How people get involved or why they do this, it's the immediate rush, you know, they hear about it, the intense euphoria, the sense of power, the feeling invincible, more alert, they can stay awake longer, get more things done. They feel they can focus better. It lowers their inhibitions, and increased sexual activity and a noticeable weight loss.
Some of the things to look for, not caring about your personal appearance or their personal appearance or grooming, obsessively picking at their skin like we talked about before, a loss of appetite or weight loss, dilated pupils and rapid eye movement, it's called myastagmas, strange sleeping patterns, staying up for days or even weeks at a time. These people may stay awake, you know, and binge for seven days, for example, and then just hit a wall and crash, and they're down like that. Borrowing money or finding other ways of obtaining it, such as the thefts and burglaries that Chief Carey mentioned, angry outbursts, the frustration at knowing that I've probably engaged in something that is going to impact me the rest of my life, psychotic behavior such as paranoia and hallucinations.
There's some microscopic things that occur in a normal brain. There's some structures within the brain that help attack or get rid of neurons that are no longer functioning in the brain. When a person starts using meth, and especially chronically, those activities that occur to get rid of the bad portions of the brain get so expanded and so activated that they actually start attacking the good neurons and getting rid of that normal brain activity. When people are seeking pleasure, whether it's by doing some crazy sport or whatever to try to get that adrenaline rush, meth surpasses that by a long ways, and when people use meth, it blocks those receptors, the dopamine receptors in the brain, and disallows them to feel that pleasure from those type of things anymore. The longer they're on meth, the more that gets disturbed, the less that dopamine is available, the more the receptors are blocked, and the more they need that drug just to try to experience some pleasure. There's so many things that they display when they're high on meth, or even coming down off of meth, or maybe they've been up for a down off of meth, or maybe they've been up for a period of eight, 10 days, and now they're in that sleep mode. A parent will see them and they're not responding appropriately, you know, sometimes they look near death because they're sleeping so hard. And when they come into us in the emergency setting, that's extremely dangerous for anybody involved. It can be for the family members, it can be for EMS responders, law enforcement, our emergency providers, the nurses and the doctors, et cetera. Because they can come out of that sleep and be so erratic and so dangerous in just a moment's notice and flying off the bed. We've had people break restraints, leather restraints, and the power that they display is just phenomenal. You know, it's, it's just the risk to any of the people who respond to these type of things. You know, some of the things that were talked about earlier too, the paranoia, you know, these people are always thinking, somebody's talking about them. You know, even though we're trying to discuss things outside the room, it might be for a different patient or whatever, these people are always thinking, we're talking about them and their behaviors and whatever. The skin wounds, the, the scabs on the arms and et cetera, it's most prevalent on the arms, I think because that's the most visible to us. People wear short sleeves or have their sleeves rolled up a little bit. As mentioned, you know, they think that there's bugs crawling underneath their skin, so they're constantly scratching and picking. And to the untrained person, this might look like an allergic reaction, you know, they, maybe they just have a rash or something like that. But if they're chronically scratching and, and to the point of open wounds, you know, it's probably something that would cause some alarm. You know, that of course leads them at risk for infections to those open wounds and more treatment. You know, as I mentioned before, the coping skills, I don't know that it's declined, but I think people have a different way of coping with things and, and our younger generations and even in some of our older generations, with newer times and, you know, just the way of getting instant gratification with electronic devices and everything, people are more apt to want an immediate result. And meth has been told to them to be able to provide some of those immediate results. So, you know, kind of affecting their brain before they ever use it. You know, you want a quick fix, you want to stay up all night, you want to be able to study all night, take a quick hit of meth and, you know, you'll get your, your needs met.
In the issue of violence in our community, within the past few years, Stepping Stones has noticed a significant increase in the amount of people receiving our services who are affected by substance use, and meth has rapidly become to the forefront as a popular drug of choice. Many victims and survivors of domestic violence abuse substances as a coping mechanism to deal with the trauma they have experienced. Other clients have watched their abuser become increasingly unpredictable and violent as a direct result of their meth use. An increase in physical, verbal, and sexual violence have all been reported in our community. Stepping Stone staff has also been informed of alarming correlation between meth use and prostitution and sex trafficking in our community. Worldwide, drug trafficking and human trafficking are in the top three criminal enterprises, and we have seen these crimes on a local level. To me, I think that was one of the most shocking things, that young girls are vulnerable to sex trafficking in our community due to their meth use. Substance use is also proving to be a huge obstacle in recovery from an abusive relationship or violent incident. Many times, a person who is abusing these drugs tends to be more distant from our staff members, and this affects their ability to take advantage of our resources to the fullest extent. Therefore, we've been reaching out to other shelters throughout the state who are also experiencing these issues.
One thing I wanted to add just before we get off the subject of violence is that a normal human being has the ability to fight off urges of violence, fight off urges of inappropriate behavior, risky behavior, et cetera. When people are using meth, they lose that ability to control themselves. So a lot of times, the violence is, you know, just a normal act to them. It's not like it's something that's abnormal, they don't have that ability to control that portion of their brain anymore. Their brain doesn't have the ability to control that unusual behavior.
If you think you know somebody or you, you yourself are using meth and you want help, you need to seek professional help. So contacting medical professionals, human services. If you look in your folders, there's lots of information on here, resources that you could go to. But if, if you're suspecting somebody might be using, be proactive, ask questions, look around, be aggressive, because this is, this is serious, this is a very dangerous thing. And I think what we're doing here tonight is educating you and take this information out, share it, educate others, make sure people know, this is here, this is in our town, and, and, and we're concerned.
Okay, next we're going to have, Chelsea's going to share her personal story.
So I am a recovering addict of meth. It all started when I was 16 years old, I was smoking and drinking. It was all fun and games till you start going out to parties every single night and things, new things are brought out. So I ended up not going to school very often because I was drinking a lot. So I got sent to the alternative school, which you have less time at school, so more time for activities, I would say. I started smoking weed because I met some friends that decided to do that. And I started a new job who brought me to Wausau, and we decided to try ecstasy, but because they didn't have ecstasy, they thought we could try crystal meth and that it would not do anything because it was one time. We went home and it was two weeks that I didn't do it, and the boyfriend that I had ended up going to jail. So I decided to party with a friend in Wausau for Christmas break, and I ended up never going back to school. My teachers did everything in their power to get me back, and nothing they did brought me back. I was addicted, it was, it's very serious, it's not something to joke around about, it's not a one-time thing, it ruins your life, it really does. I had a boyfriend, I let him live with, me and my parents. He ended up stealing wedding rings, DVDs, computers, laptops, you name it, he stole it. My parents bought me a car in high school and he would steal the car when I was sleeping to go get meth and ended up blowing the tranny and they sold the car. So we ran around Wausau borrowing cars, living from house to house, dirty houses, they're not clean houses at all. It's gross, but you don't care, you really do not care at all. Let's see, he went to jail and I needed to support my habit, so I met somebody who was, I guess you would consider them a dealer, a plug, and they got me started on selling it. When I realized to the point where I was making money that I didn't have before and I didn't need a job, I felt invincible and I felt like I just wanted to continuously do it. Meth has an effect on you to the point where your family can care entirely about you, and you don't care. My mom could be crying at night because she didn't know where I was and I didn't have a care in the world. I had no feelings, none whatsoever. I was dealing large amounts to the point where I was dealing amounts that weren't even on their list, so you can imagine. I thought I was going to be okay. So I texted my mom one night because I was sick of living the way I was living, because eventually I got sick of smoking it, smoking it wasn't doing it, so I did end up injecting it because of somebody who decided that it would be okay. They told me everything would be okay. It's not okay. Once you hit that point, that's the end. There's, you feel like there's no hope in the world for you whatsoever. So I texted my mom when I was sick of it and I asked her, can I please borrow your car to move home? I want to pack up all my stuff, I want to move home. The next day, I was going to pack up my stuff, I gave all my drugs away, I didn't care what happened with them, and I never showed up to pick up her car. Because the cops ended up raiding the hotel room we were at, there were still drugs there, even though they weren't on the person, I still got charged with a very large amount. I ended up going to jail, uh, let's see, March of 2014. And I sat there and I watched girls go into jail, come out of jail, get out, come back in, and I sat there and I thought to myself, do I want to be that person? Do I really want to live like this the rest of my life? So I sat in jail for about seven months and thought. Finally, my attorney got me a signature bond on house arrest, so my mother had to sign my signature bond too, meaning I couldn't go anywhere without her. And she would drive to Wausau every single day to work and back, and come back to Athens to pick me up, to drive all the way back to Wausau so I could do a urine test and breathalyzer every single day, four to five times a week randomly. So when I started doing good on that and sentencing came, I wrote an apology to the court that not only was I sorry for what I've done, but that I realized that selling drugs in your community puts everybody else at risk, not only the people that are using, but it puts it out on the street for kids that are innocent and don't know what's going on. It's wrong. So the judge ended up doing a PSI and looking at my family background and looking at the trouble I've been in, because I really, I was a good kid, I didn't get the best grades, but I tried, I had a loving heart and meth just ruined that. So she gave, ended up giving me five years probation and time served. So I am still on probation today, but I am two and a half years clean as of this month. And... But I never could have did it without my family, with the moral support that I had. A lot of people use the excuse as I came from a broken family. I came from a family where my parents are still together, they'd do anything in this world for their kids, and I still got hooked up on bad things. But what matters is, I went back to school when I got out of jail, I graduated high school. And I am now working at Harley-Davidson in Wausau full-time, and I have a brand-new vehicle that I work very hard for. And yeah, I'm still on probation for another, in November, it'll be three years I have left, but I can do this. That's, that's it.
Not many of the people that I work with have that outcome. Many of the people that I work with, I see on a crisis situation, so I either see them at the jail or the emergency room. The reason that I'm called in is because those people are oftentimes feeling suicidal, they're feeling depressed because of the situation that they're in. But a lot of the times, I see them when they are quite psychotic, they're doing things that they wouldn't normally otherwise do, whether it be seeing people that aren't there or hearing people talking about them or talking about something and, and the person doesn't even exist. So a lot of the people, you heard before, the, the brain changes when you do meth, and so a lot of the people that I see have some psychosis or thought disorder issues where they can't make rational sense anymore when they talk, they're extremely paranoid, they usually haven't slept in a week, haven't eaten most of the time. Many of their, their fine motor skills are there, they can't remember anything, sometimes they become quite aggressive and violent, hurting people that they love without realizing it. So I'm brought in and I, I talk with them and I try to figure out what's the, the best plan, and my ultimate goal is always safety, not only for them, but for other people. So unfortunately, usually we have to place those people in a secure facility in order to keep them safe. I wanted to let you know that as of today, since October of 2014, just my unit alone, the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Unit, has spent approximately $675,000 of your money to keep people who are on meth safe, not only for themselves, but to keep you safe too. So that they're in a facility that's locked, and the goal being is treatment and hopefully that they can come out clean and sober and return to their families. But unfortunately, many of the people that I work with, because of the damage that it does to their brain, they're in there a really long time. And so far, we haven't really seen any treatment that necessarily works in order to bring their brain back to their functioning that they were before they started using meth. So each time I hospitalized somebody, not only is it the staff time that you see up here, which is about $300 to $500, just with us, every single day that they're in a facility, it's about $1,000 to $1,300. If they have to go into a long-term facility, it's about $333 a day. And if they end up into a, in a group home placement all around the state of Wisconsin, it's between $150 and $500 a day. Sometimes those people get out of that facility and they return to using because the addiction is so strong. So I'm excited to hear, when I hear Chelsea's story, I get pretty excited because I know that there's hope. Unfortunately, I haven't seen a lot of those cases, so hopefully, prevention-wise, we can start working towards a greater common good. As you've heard tonight, meth has an effect on the safety of our neighborhood. Chemical exposures from meth is a concern in our neighborhoods. It poses a serious health risk to us. There is an increased availability in drugs in our community, as you've heard tonight. Increased crime, meth is powerfully addicted and is closely linked to high crime rates. Crime often occurs under the influence of the drugs and also when they're trying to finance the purchase of the drugs or to manufacture the drug. This has caused many of our crimes in Taylor County, as you've heard. There's been an increase in property and sex crimes, burglaries, domestic abuse, and assaults. Friends, family, neighbors, it affects everybody. It's impacting all walks of life, it's not any certain group of people, it's tearing apart our families. Our schools has also seen the effect as well. Last year, we had several families affected by drug arrests, leaving children to be placed with relatives, family, friends, and foster homes. This has caused an increased level of anxiety for some of our students. Children are scared to leave their parents at school, knowing they're not sure when they'll see them again. Children that are trying to save their money so they can get their dad out of jail so they can go back home. These children are, are at a great risk for physical, emotional, and developmental harm. There's been an increase of out-of-home placements. What does that mean for our future? Meth has a big impact on our future. It also affects pregnancies and birth. The risk to the embryo and fetus during pregnancy can occur both in the production and the use of meth. It can cause malformation of the embryo and result in birth defects and stillbirths. There is an increased risk of premature delivery, constricts blood vessels, resulting in reduced blood flow to the fetus. There will be an increase in the amount of children who experience childhood trauma that can last well beyond childhood. These traumatic experiences can impact their learning, their behavior, and their relationships. To address this trauma, it requires that adults share the responsibility for all children. As a school, we have begun this work by becoming a trauma-sensitive school. As a community, we invite you to help us with this endeavor.
Next, we'll hear a personal story from Tammy.
My name's Tammy, I'm a single mom, I have two boys. Kayden, my eight-year-old, and Joel, 22. Kayden's here with me tonight, but his older brother can't be, he's in San Troy Correctional Facility, that's where his addiction for meth has gotten him. My battle to save him started 10 years ago. I thought I could trust a parent that was watching him and I couldn't. During that next year, Joel admitted to using marijuana, alcohol, acid, shrooms, even heroin. In high school, he abused prescription drugs, over-the-counter cold medications, resulting in a drug overdose. It's easier for me to say that if it's been, if it's there, he's tried it. It disturbs me that he sees himself as a drug connoisseur. He feels that he can help others properly use these drugs. These are his words, not mine. My response was, "You're a glorified drug pusher." He doesn't look like an addict or a drug dealer, but he is. But he's my son, and no matter what, I love him. Many addicts will deal to support their habits, and as their habits get worse, they have... And as their habits get worse, they have to be that much more charming, manipulative, and even dangerous. They become addicted to the easy money as much as they do to the drugs. And Joel loved both. About a year and a half ago, Joel had his first positive meth test. He swore he'd never try it and the test was wrong. And I tried to believe him, but deep down, I knew it wasn't true. September of last year, my son was again arrested and he had another positive meth test. Shortly after his arrest, I went to see him. You know what I remember? Yellow teeth. My son's darker skin and he's always had perfect teeth. On that day, I noticed they were yellow. And that was the day I finally admitted to myself that he was using meth. He spent five months in jail. He got out January 19th of this year. And he looked better than he had in a long time. His teeth were white again. The sores that I thought were acne had all healed up. As a family, we figured he deserved the chance to prove he was serious about staying clean. But he was only worried about repairing his street rep and getting his girlfriend off of meth. So we moved her in too. I hadn't seen her in months and we were shocked by how much weight she had lost. Her eyes were lifeless, her hair. She spent days in the bathroom, coughing, spitting up blood. Her throat was dried out and raw from snorting the meth. During the next week, all she did was eat, drink, and sleep. But as she returned to normal, our house started to take on a new life. Joel was spending quality time with his brother that he'd never done. There was love and laughter in our house and in our lives. We could sit down and talk with respect we never had. We thought the worst was over, but a family can fall a lot farther. Valentine's Day of this year, my son and girlfriend decided that they were going to go hang out at a friend's house. They were gone for three days. A privacy is not a right in my home. So on a gut feeling, I hacked his Facebook Messenger. Reading the messages, it appeared he was dealing again. And if he was dealing, then he was using. I expected relapses, but I didn't know what to do. On Thursday, they returned and though he seemed fine, I knew she was high. Joel insisted she was just tired. And I wanted to believe him. I sat there with him on the couch and I listened to every lie he told me of what he had or had not done while they were gone. He told me he was going to go out with a friend of his, but what his Messenger showed is that he went to meet a different friend and sell some pot. I sat up that night not knowing what to do and I tried to stay strong and I wanted to hold on to the faith. I decided I needed to talk to his probation officer and pull him in for a PO hold. Maybe we could scare him and get him back on straight because you don't want to give up on your kids. It was sometime during that night, though, that it dawned on me, if he'd left my house to deal drugs, that means he'd had it in the house with my eight-year-old. Friday, there was no school and Joel was spending time with his brother. I figured he'd sold the drugs, so they weren't in my home anymore. I tried to call his probation officer, but she was out on home visits. Well, I checked his Messenger again. And at that moment, right then, he was getting ready to set up a deal out of my front door while watching his eight-year-old little brother. In less than that minute, I literally thought of a dozen ways that it could go wrong for my son. Kayden was due the next day to celebrate his eighth birthday party and he was supposed to have six kids spending the night. And I knew that they were all at risk if I didn't act now. I can only describe as what I did as being forced to cut off a diseased limb to try to save the other one. You don't think, you react. It's the most god-awful position to be in and I don't want another parent to have to do it. So before I could talk myself out of it, I left work and I went to the police department with the messages. I couldn't get Kayden out of the home before the police showed up. They were very, they were awesome. They were low-key. He really got a kick out of the K-9 unit. But pieces of him broke that day and he clung to me because he knew his brother was going back to jail. The officers found what I would describe as a large amount of marijuana, a bottle of urine he was planning to use so he could pass as food stamps for the drug screen, and an ice cube gum container. It had meth in. Meth in a gum container. I can't, I can't, I can't even get rid of this because it's a constant reminder that what kid would think there was drugs in something like this? They wouldn't have thought twice. They would have taken it. It could have been mine, it could have been anybody else's. How could my son, who said that he loved his family so much, risk everyone in that household? That day was February 19th. And that day, I honestly realized that drugs were more important than his own family. That night, I sat down and I called every parent to tell them what had happened, what we had found, what we had done, and to hope that they would still trust me enough to allow their kids to come to my house to spend the birthday with my son. Luckily, they did. Because I can't imagine how Kayden would have been hurt to lose his birthday too. But I'm glad that I can remember February 19th for what it was. Because if I was remembering February 20th, it's because I'd have had to make a phone call to one of those parents and tell them, "Your child got meth in my home. And your child overdosed on meth in my home where they're supposed to be safe." Now, it's been terrible for Kayden. He just walked out. For days, he hated me because I'm the one that called the cops. He actually told me that if I had waited, Joel would have sold all the drugs. They wouldn't have been in the house anymore. It would have been fine then. That's how an eight-year-old thinks. But how does somebody his age process this? Well, he lashed out. He lashed out at home. He lashed out at school. He started sleeping with the nightlight again. And he hated his brother. How could his brother lug drugs more than us? It's been seven months since that day and Kayden is just getting to the point where he'll talk about his brother again. But when Joel calls, he turns his back and he will not speak to him. Since then, there's been a darkness in our house, in our lives, in our hearts. We should probably have been in counseling, but you tend to just kind of exist. You don't realize what's truly happening. Kayden and I were recently talking and he mentioned how the house was no longer happy. They had been happier than ever when Joel was home. And we're struggling to get that back. It's happening slowly and in part thanks to the Taylor County Drug Opposition's Meth Project. It's kind of given me an outlet and some purpose. I've also been working on starting a meth support group for other parents, family members of the loved ones that use meth. I have felt so alone through all of this. And I know there's got to be others out there that going through it, probably even worse. And I want you to know, we're here. We know. We want to help. In January, Joel's supposed to be released from prison. But there's not really any resources here to help him if he wants to stay clean. Where will he live? Who's going to hire him? Who's going to give him a chance? I want him to have a fighting chance. I don't want to lose my son. I'm still fighting for him, but I'm exhausted. I'm exhausted from waiting for the phone to ring to tell me that he's dead or that he's responsible for somebody else's death. When I started writing this, I got my bi-weekly phone call from Joel. I told him that I did find some resources in the county he's currently in. He told me he wasn't interested. He told me that he's maintaining contact with some of his meth friends, one who's currently serving prison time also. And I questioned his commitment to staying clean and starting over, but he told me all he wants to do is get high. He prefers a lot of other drugs and is not willing to give them up. He said that meth is a nasty drug and he would never want anybody to get into, but that he finds that the drug that he hates the most is the drug that he will end up using the most. As he said, it is now his unfortunate drug of choice. While this is the closest he's ever gotten to admitting being addicted to meth, it breaks my heart to know he's not ready to fight for his life. Those phone calls really mess us up. We start to question why we fight so hard for him. I even stopped writing this story and told myself, "I couldn't do this anymore." But I realized, I'm not doing this for him. We struggle every day to try to find a normal life again. And he's not going to stop us. So I'm cutting off the diseased arm and I'm hoping that I can keep Kayden safe. But I can't do it alone. Medford has a problem and we need to address it now. And it takes an entire community to raise a child. And I want this community to be safe for all of ours.
Thank you, Tammy and Kayden. That is our question. What are we going to do? We know we have a meth problem in Medford. And what are we going to do to help our families and to help keep families together and to help all the kids? Some of the things we're doing currently in Medford is we have a community campaign going on. We are working as a community to bring awareness about meth and its effects. We want to keep our communities, we want to keep our community off of meth. We want to help those who are in need of getting off of it. Talking to the community, we've been providing information to our community through meetings like tonight. We plan to do more. We had a booth at the fair. There's been information on meth in the Star News and also on the radio. Law enforcement has been working extremely hard, providing trainings at multiple meetings in the community. They help individuals who are ready to get treatment when they're dealing with them on their end. And they help protect our children out there. We recently have started a Drug Endangered Children program in Taylor County to help our children that are affected by meth and when they're in need of being placed in a different home. Trauma-informed care is a big thing right now. There's been a lot of trainings on trauma-informed care, providing more awareness of it, what it is, what can we do as a community to help. Our school has been working to become a trauma-sensitive school, just to get people to be more understanding of what some of our children are going through. Drug Coalition, we've had a drug coalition in Taylor County for the past four years, which is wonderful. This group has worked hard to bring awareness to not only drugs, as in meth, but also to alcohol. So they've worked hard over the last four years. And they have also involved our youth in that as well, which I think is an important part of this puzzle. And then the latest and greatest thing that we have started in Taylor County, as we have started the Meth Project, this group will continue to work to bring this awareness to our community by involving our community and also our youth as well. So people are more aware of what meth is and the effects it's having.
Being here tonight is important. It's important to everybody up here that, that all of you showed up. It's important to, to yourself, to your families. It's important to your neighbors, to the community in which we live, which we raise our children. We've heard two stories, local, local enough to know how family matters. Ask questions. We'll have a question section after the panel is done talking and presenting. But I would just put out there real briefly that if, for some reason, you, you don't want to raise your hand, you don't want to ask that question tonight, we've all introduced ourselves, you know which departments, which agencies we represent and work for, call us, stop in, make an appointment, you know, bring the information to us. It doesn't have to be done in this setting if you're not comfortable doing that. So ask questions. It says right here, if you don't ask questions, who will? I'd ask that, look in your, look in your neighborhoods. We've talked about where this can be. Well, we know where, we know where it can be. It can be everywhere. We've looked at that it's in every single, it doesn't matter how much you're making, how many, how many, what your paycheck is, it doesn't matter, your, your education level. This is affecting every single, every single person in our community. So be observant. Ask questions. The very first one, if you see something, say something. That's a little slogan that's going around the United States. You're using it for everything, from domestic terrorism, terrorism period, just anything. If you see something, say something. A brief story of, of someone who called me two days ago that pointed out that there was a family member at this, this residence across the street. This family member's no longer allowed to be at his parents' house. But he shows up every once in a while and he goes around the back of the house. And then shortly, shortly after that, he comes back out. And my question is, why didn't you call us? That is a suspected drug incident that we're looking into. So if, and I told him, if you see something, say something. Report it to us. The other thing, you're here tonight, so let's talk about it. Let's not be shy about it. Sometimes you just have to look something straight in the eye and you just have to say, "As ugly as it may be, that's why we're here." So we need to, we need to look it straight in the eye. We need to confront this. We need to take it head-on. And we just need to say, no matter how ugly it may be, how ugly it may look, how ugly it may get, we're putting our foot down. We're stopping it right here, not in our backyards, not in our homes, not in our schools, not in our lives. Prevention is key. But just talk about it. Get, get that conversation started, which I think all of us here tonight are doing. You're here, it's important to us. So tonight is a good, it's a good night and that, that conversation has, has started.
I taught your kids, you know, we see the results. You are, as parents, those of you that are here that are parents tonight, you are in the very best position to know what's going on with your kids. I would venture, I guess, and say that they would like for you to want to know what's going on in their lives. So that's very, very important. Our focus here, this group's focus is not to punish your children or any Matthews necessarily, it's to protect them. That's our, that's our mission. We have a coalition here that we, that we belong to in Taylor County. And up until tonight, we've been missing one critical, very critical component. And it's the however many people are sitting here in this audience. That's the team. And we can, we can attack this thing, but we have to do it together. I just want to close with an illustration of that. Everybody's been wondering why this thing was here anyway, so I'm going to tell you. Nestle sponsored Sackett's Lake-Athon. And this was a meth awareness program fundraiser, fun event. It was actually a athletic event where we did a bike, a canoe race, a swimming, and then a foot race. And what I would say to you is that if a cop from the sheriff's office, a cop from the Medford Police Department, and two concerned community members can work together and, and win that challenge, then I would say that everybody at these tables, along with your help, can win the challenge of, of meth in our community. And just like Tammy said, we have to try.